Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Bag. It was excellent.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Oh, trustee Kellogg, your time's up.
Yeah. Okay, let's not go there. A couple of questions on this. And actually, I know Anne Marie Gabel circulated because I was very curious when you were looking at this. And I went back. These kind of things actually intrigue me, and I'm involved in these type of processes. Going back five years to see how a board, to the point some of my colleagues have made, on how we bring information in and how we work through it. A lot of terminology you can use on this, and how you can take this information, how you interpret it, and then how you make recommendations. So I just wanted to go back and look and see, and I don't have any great answers for that. I just was curious about how, because a board five years ago was a very different board as far as years sitting and what it changes as far as time. The one suggestion I'm going to make again, and it's under Part Two, and I've always had this about Part Two. Of all those sections of this, this one to me is almost like a test rather than information. And sometimes it's interpreted differently. For example, where are we in certain processes in some people's minds? It may be in process, it may be successfully completed. But a lot of times, it's almost, I will, honestly, I'll call up and say, hey, where are we with this process? Because I'm not 100% sure. I know we're doing it, but it's almost as if I don't want to make a mistake on the answer. But it doesn't really matter. Most of us say, well, it's in process, et cetera. So just my point again on Part Two. It's sometimes, I just don't really pull a lot of information out of it that I think is valuable, and there may be other reasons why it is part of this, but just for future consideration on as we put this thing together. And then the final point about as we, how these items and what we look at, and it's already been mentioned, about how we sit down with our board goals and establish the board goals and help us to establish the board goals. That's also critical. And we can take this information and help us do that again for the next 12 months. Besides that, as you mentioned, part of accreditation, and we always do this. And you try to pull things out of these documents that can help us to become better as board members and also individually and as a board in general. So it's always interesting for me to see how we move forward and how we eventually, how we pick up the information and how we really interpret it. And I can only tell you, after you do it a couple of times, it gets quicker and quicker. Nothing new about that. So anyway, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bag.
President Baxter.
Yes.
You might have asked.
Trustee Malauulu.
Great. I know we're over the 10 minutes, but.
Yeah, you're over the 10 minutes.
Sorry. I just have sort of two questions. The first one, I'm kind of going off of trustee Malauulu's comments. Is there any opportunity for some of the, you know, community members to participate in, maybe not participate in this kind of evaluation, but some form of accountability metric for individuals? Because we can say, you know, I can say that I've done a great job in communicating, but there are individuals that might feel otherwise. And the second part is sort of a suggestion, and I don't know how often this assessment gets redone. You mentioned it's been here for years, so I don't think there's been much change since. But if there's a way in the future to just incorporate the position of the student trustee, I think that would definitely be beneficial, just because we don't have, I wasn't able to participate in the actual survey. And hopefully, in the future, we can incorporate that to make sure that the student is held to the same standards as a regular trustee.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next. 4.3 update on superintendent president search. First of all, I want to thank the search committee for doing an outstanding job in reading all the applications, interviewing the people that they chose to interview, and then forwarding to us five very good candidates. And the board met on Saturday to interview those five people. On Monday, we had a candidate forum, and all five people were there, one via Skype.
On campus.
On campus in the auditorium. I stayed for all five because I just wanted to be a little fly on the wall. And I was pleased with the turnout of people. I know it was difficult for anybody to sit there between 12 and 5, but it was only fair to the candidates. We can't keep making them come back and back and back. And I want to personally thank Jackie Han, who has gone above and beyond the call of duty to prepare all the materials, to get us all taken care of, make sure we were fed, and all the arrangements made. And thank you very much, Jackie, for that. And Cindy Hanks left, but I want to thank Cindy Hanks and Dario, who came over to the Marriott Courtyard on Saturday and set up the Skype, tested it to make sure that the candidate who was broadcasting from China, that she was given equal treatment as far as reception of the Skype and all that. And so, Dario, you're here, so you please tell Cindy thank you very much. We are so fortunate to have great employees at Long Beach City College, both who served on the screening and selection committee, and people working behind the scenes. And I truly appreciate all the work that you guys have done to bring us five people. Just for information item, we will have a second closed session after the board meeting to discuss, and I'll just leave it at that. And I'll go on unless somebody wants to say something. Okay?
Madam Chair, I would also like to reiterate what Board President Baxter said in terms of acknowledging the work and preparation that has been involved in making this search possible. Jackie, Cindy, a lot of the staff that really, really has gone above and beyond. Also, I'd like to echo my gratitude to the search committee. I think that they forwarded five really qualified candidates, which is making our decision even more difficult because they're all very qualified. And I think that each candidate would bring something very valuable to the table and really make a difference in what we're doing here. It's just a matter of determining which of the five would probably be a better fit. But as far as the interview process, the selection process, the forums, yes, there's always room for improvement. Hindsight is 20/20, but overall, it has been a good process, and we hope to be able to, you know, announce a great superintendent president in the next few weeks. So thank you to everybody that's had a hand in this.
And I should have mentioned Rose Delgado, the chair of the screening and selection committee. And I know you spent a lot of hours at night and on the weekends making sure that everything was perfect. So thank you very much, Rose, for your role in that. And that was a great suggestion, appointing Rose as the chair.
President Baxter could also mention, I wanted to mention, Miles Nevin. He was an individual that provided a lot of behind-the-scenes support and logistics, and so I don't want to leave him out because he's put a lot of time into the effort.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
President Baxter, I have something to add.
Yes, trustee Zia.
Thank you. I'm glad the suggestion was good. I was confident it was. Just a minor observation and potential area of process enhancement. You know, when we had these discussions back in January, I thought I made it very clear that the public meetings should be at a time where people, working families, working people can participate. And I have to tell you that I was disappointed that that didn't happen on Monday, and the notification that went out was not, in my book, ample time for folks to be notified in the public. And as a result, the public forums were poorly attended. I had to take time off from work to attend one, and that was the only one I could go. But just wanted to, you know, we want to show our commitment to transparency. The public has the right to know and participate, and we need to be consistent in our actions that, if we want people to participate, then we should put it at a time where people are available to participate, which is usually evening time. So hopefully, we don't have to go through the process again. And the other thing I want to mention is that I am in no way, shape, or form in a rush to make a decision, and I think we should take our time as we have been. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 4.4, Community College Classified Employee of the Year Award. And I am recommending, and we will need a motion on this, that the Board of Trustees endorse the nomination of Cece Sadler and forward the information to the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Otto, seconded by trustee Kellogg. If I can just say, I've known Cece Sadler since she was 18 years old and came to Long Beach City College as a student. And Cece, are you here?
Yes.
Oh, come on, get up. Come on, get up. Anyway, she has really kind of transformed herself over and over and found her niche in the learning resources area, where she can use her artistic talent or computer talent. And she goes above and beyond what employees are expected to do, having served on a number of college-wide committees and giving of herself freely. And I certainly appreciate her service and congratulate her on this award. Anybody else before we call the question?
Definitely want to congratulate Cece. I've seen your work. Thank you very much for what you do. And I think not only do you, you know, you make the classified staff obviously very proud, but also the college itself. So thank you very much.
And you're a fantastic candidate. I hope you can win this award because it's good not only for the college, but it'll recognize all that you do. And I don't think I can turn around on this campus without running into you with this activity or that activity, and you just embody the Long Beach City College spirit. So congratulations.
May I ask a question? Does she get a free trip to Sacramento? I mean, what does she get for this big honor?
And prizes what?
If she is selected, yes. She can say.
Oh, so she's a nominee? I thought it was.
She's a nominee. So we, or you, as the board, are recommending her to receive the award from the Board of Governors of the Chancellor's Office. So they will be taking in the nominations and making a determination on who they're going to award the classified employee to. So if selected, which we think that she would have a very good chance for everything that she has done, and I would like to say, when we were discussing all the possibilities, you know, we have a wonderful set of classified staff. And so it was a difficult decision for the executive committee to make because of all of, you know, everything the classified staff does for us. Because we know the college runs with our employees, you know, that's the faculty and the classified staff. So anyway, the executive team was pretty much unanimously, and it was a very easy decision for us to come to Cece's name on who we wanted to recommend to the board. So if the Board of Governors sees the wisdom that we see ourselves, they will select Cece. And yes, she would get a free trip up to Sacramento. The downside is that she would be attending with me. Hopefully, hopefully, she will still accept if it's awarded to her. But yes, we would go up to a Board of Governors meeting to accept on behalf of the college.
Isn't there a cash award as well?
Yes, there is, yes.
And how much is that? I think it's 500.
I think it's 500, but yeah, I'm not positive.
Oh, boy. Good for you.
Drinks on her.
Yeah. Okay, 5.1.
Did we take action?
Oh, I'm sure we forgot to vote. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of, which item is it?
5.14.
5.14, unless there are other items being desired to be pulled from the consent calendar.
Yes, I know that we are pressed for time tonight, and I did have several items that I wanted to pull, but I've been working with Acting Superintendent President Gabel, and she's been clarifying some things for me. And I know that we have some things for Vice President Betty that we're going to go over later, just in the interest of time, because we do have a second closed session. However, there are just a couple of items that I would like to pull very briefly because they involve students. So the first one is item 5.7, and the second one is item 5.13.
Okay, so we are pulling 5.13, 5.14, and 5.7.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Kellogg, you made the motion. I need a second.
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 Okay.
I don't know what's.
Trustee Kellogg moved and trustee Otto seconded, that the remaining parts of the consent calendar be accepted.
Approved.
Approved.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, so let's go with 5.13.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. On.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. 5.7, I don't know my math very well. 5.7 is before 1.
Okay.
So 5.7.
Item 5.7, on page two, item number two and item number 10, there are Barnes &amp; Nobles gift cards for students, and there are the McDonald, David Joel McDonald for meal cards for extended EOPS students. And the only thing that I would like to bring up is just some kind of list of the students' names who are recipients. I'd like to know if that is public information, if it is public knowledge. We're spending $237,000, almost $238,000 on gift cards for students, which is great, fabulous. You will not get an argument from me out of that. But I want to make sure that they are actually going into the hands of students, and how can we verify that if we need to?
Vice President Peterson, would you like to respond?
So your question about providing names of students who are receiving that, that would be protected, that wouldn't be a general information item that could be provided outside of FERPA?
Could I clarify, are these not book grants for the students? They're just not giving out gift cards for Barnes &amp; Noble?
So the item, I think the item was mentioned, it was.
They are, they're gift cards, but it's a gift card as part of the grant. So the student is, qualifies for the respective programs, and within that program, one of the pieces of aid that is provided to them are gift cards.
And they're not using the gift cards to purchase textbooks at our bookstore? They're going to Barnes &amp; Nobles with those gift cards? Or how does that work?
Barnes &amp; Noble is our bookstore.
Yes, Barnes &amp; Noble is our bookstore.
So it's being used on this campus, not going to a market?
Correct.
Barnes &amp; Noble.
And the David McDonald, that is the proprietor of our cafeteria on campus. And so that's one of the things that trying to work with all of our grants where we have the ability is to put the money back onto campus.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I applaud that. I just want to know, do you keep a record of the students, obviously, and for audit purposes? And if I wanted to see a list of the students, is that accessible to me at some point? Maybe not public record, but if I wanted to see the names of the students on there? Like, how many students are getting that? Say, these, you know, $238,000 worth of gift cards, how many students are getting those cards?
We could provide general information on the number of students who are receiving, the number of students participating in our EOPS program, so you can get a sense of the percentage of students in the program who are receiving.
Okay. And the cards, too? How many? Okay. All right, sounds good. Yeah, if you can give me that information, that would be awesome. I don't think I'm going to walk around campus and just randomly poll students and ask them if they're getting a gift card, but it would be nice to know that they are there and they're using this great service.
The other, but trustee Malauulu, they have to be part of the EOPS program, and they have to apply. They're just not handing out gift cards to people.
Correct, correct. On page three, I just have one quick question. And the only reason is because I did a little bit of math. So item one and two, item one has got, you know, $1.3 million for construction services for buildings. I understand what construction services are. But then item two has $360,000 for construction management, and the window of time is so short that I had to do the math. So this is December 31 through February 3. So if you take $357,000 and divide it by 33 days, it comes out to about $11,000 a day. And I just want to know what the specific construction management is. I'm assuming payroll and things associated with that, but if I'm incorrect in that, what is the construction management that comes to $11,000 per day?
Dr. Miller, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to answer it?
I think you're probably a little bit more familiar with that particular issue.
Okay. So Cordoba Corporation, they are the entity that acts as our project managers and our construction managers. So they have, I want to say, 15 to 20 employees that are working full-time and are housed at our campus, working on all of our entire construction program. So these are the individuals that are our construction managers, that are overseeing all of the contractors, they're working with the architects, they're working with the inspectors of record, they do the bond accounting for us, they process all of the paperwork that is necessary for it. So it is a contract that has been approved by the board, and that's the services. So they're really an extension of the college staff in order to run and oversee the bond program. The number one, Robert Clapper, that's the actual contractor doing the work at our buildings' Q, Q, and R, R. So it was just the amount of work that they were able to accomplish, and that's what they were billing for that.
Okay, got it. So it includes, it does include payroll?
One item, I'm sorry, one item if I could add it. All the invoices from this firm go through our internal auditor's office as well. He reviews those for consistency, making sure there's no overlap in services.
Okay, thank you. That clears it up for me. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Malauulu, did all those questions pertain to 5.7?
Correct.
Okay. So now, 5.13.
Do you take action on 5.7?
I'm sorry. Oh, we have to vote on 5.1? Okay. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion to vote on 5.7?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Kellogg.
Second.
Trustee Otto. Okay, could we have the roll, please?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Absent.
Absent.
Okay, 5.13.
Okay, I will be very, very quick on this one. It's on both pages, one and two, and we talked about this at the last meeting. These items are revenue coming into the district, they're from grants. Acting Vice President Anne Marie Gabel, I'm sorry, Acting Superintendent President Gabel did clarify some of this for me. But I just wanted to just remind staff of the request that I had to be able to see the money that are actually coming in, because we get budgets of money that's going out. And I know that we've got some items, I have other questions, we've got some abatable items, and we talked about this at the last meeting, also in the December meeting, I think, to be able to have a record of the finances coming in. So it's just mostly a reminder, when we see items that are coming in, being deposited revenue, you know, whatever report we can get to ensure that it is coming back to us, or if we do an open purchase order for $1,000, but we actually only spend whatever, and not have to wait until the end of the budget, until the budget is balanced at the end of the year. And that's it. There's no real question on that. It's more as a reminder.
Okay, very good. So now we need a motion on 5.13.
Motion to approve.
Okay, by Kellogg.
Second.
Seconded by Otto.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Okay, absent. Okay, then 5.14, we're just pulling from the agenda, right? Do we need to take action on that? Okay?
Yes. Yes, you're only pulling one specific line item in 5.14.
Okay. So who's going to move to pull that one specific line item?
No, you're going to have to vote on the whole item. You're going to discuss the.
Oh, so we vote on the whole item?
No.
They're pulling one line item off of.
Because it hasn't been approved.
So do we have two votes?
I put it in nonconsent.
Or one vote?
One vote. Just let me know what you're pulling from.
Superintendent President.
The resignation. So the resignation that is listed is being pulled off of the agenda. So the board action would be to approve this item except for the resignation.
Okay.
So motion to approve with the exception of the resignation item.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded by Otto. So it was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Otto. Madam Secretary, did you get that?
Is that clear enough for the record?
There's one resignation.
There's only one resignation?
Yes.
On page one.
Now, and then I'll clean up my notes.
Okay.
To remove the resignation.
All right. That's the motion, then.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Absent.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia was not here.
Sunny, do you want to hold it?
Aye.
Does she know what she's voting for?
Yeah, there's.
I know what I'm voting for. I've read the board docket.
Okay. Okay, 6.0, Academic Senate. Ms. Kane.
Thank you, President Baxter. I'm just presenting to the board items that have been modified and/or inactivated through the curriculum process.
So moved.
Say, moved by trustee Otto.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kellogg.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Excuse me, shouldn't we have discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Academic Senate President, can you, you know, give us some overview of what, why we're recommending some of these courses to be inactive, or, I mean, it's just, it'd be nice to know what this is about, or some context, please?
If you look on the second page where it says inactivated courses, as per the request from a couple of meetings ago, we've now fleshed out even more why. So it says reason, the course is no longer required, there are a lot of departments are cleaning up their curriculum guides and deciding if their teaching courses are still, that are still on the books. Sometimes these courses have sat for a long time, and we're now doing a really concerted effort of cleaning up courses that we're not teaching or are no longer needed.
Okay, where is that written?
If you look on the second page where it says inactivated courses, ADN 322A, for example, it lists the course name, the unit value, and the reason.
Yeah, I don't understand. It just says it doesn't, it's no longer required.
No longer required by the department, they're not teaching it.
I get that part.
And then it goes on for further explanation.
Right.
The previous course included both pediatrics and critical care, so they took care to actually give more explanation as to why they are inactivating the course.
I still don't understand, Academic Senate President, perhaps you can, for my own edification, members of the public who are reviewing this, it's, so for example, if we're splitting ADN 45A from pediatrics, what does that mean? Is that because there's no need in the community, in the industry, that that's, there's not enough demand? Can you elaborate a little bit? Because this doesn't tell me much.
Well, each department goes through their particular courses, so I'm not privy to every single discussion that they have within their discipline as to why they're doing this, but as the discipline experts, they decide, given industry needs or labor needs, as to what we need to be offering. So it could be even that they had, in this case, they might have had an advisory board recommend that this would be the appropriate way to offer the courses. I'm not privy to those discussions. When they come forward to curriculum, they've already gone through several subcommittees, and then curriculum will vote per the explanation given by the department.
Yes, and my point is, I would like to know that explanation, because I'm not, as you know, it sounds like you don't necessarily know the details as well. There's might've, could've, should'ves, and I don't want to vote based on those kinds of rationale. I want to know the details for why. I want to know the details for why we're having a course inactivated in the future before I vote.
Vice President Long?
Yes, these are all CTE courses, meaning that any change in any offering of a course in a degree or certificate here at the college must be recommended by an advisory committee. So, these are recommendations from an advisory committee. For example, the first one you asked about was a combined course that covered critical care and pediatrics. The advisory committee is recommending that we create two separate courses. So, based on the advisory committee recommendations, and I'm sure the BRN recommendations, we've taken 322A and inactivated it, no longer meets the workforce needs for nursing, and created two courses that the advisory committee members said we must have in order to meet the needs for our nursing students. So, every single course in CTE is very carefully reviewed and must be, the recommendation must come from an advisory committee to say, this course is no longer meeting the outcomes required for the positions that our students would get when they complete the degree or certificate, and therefore inactivate the ones that are no longer meeting the needs and create new courses that do meet the needs and outcomes required for the positions.
So, when you're inactivating ADN 322A for advanced nursing, for adult critical care, what are you replacing it with, those two courses that you just mentioned? Is it, where are those two courses?
Well, the two courses that are listed here says that it's critical care, ADN 45A has been split from pediatrics. So, they've split them into two new courses.
Okay, yeah, this is very confusing, I have to tell you. And it's very hard to follow for someone who's not close to the course process. A member of the public should be able to understand that. I don't understand it as a board member, and I don't see how a member of the public could understand it. For example, this ADN 22A and critical care ADN 45A, which one is it? Are we splitting this inactive course and replacing it with two courses? That is ADN 45A and pediatrics 35B, is that what it is? It's hard to tell.
Are you concerned that we're, that the department faculty are not doing what is best for our nursing students in terms of revising and modifying and activating curriculum? I guess my question is, we have about 1,400 courses on the books that have been approved through the curriculum process and by the board of, by the Chancellors Office. So, my question is, as Karen said, all of these go from department to a committee that reviews. These have all been reviewed, by the way, by our advisory committee, our regional advisory committee. So, my question is, we couldn't possibly follow all of that curriculum in terms of having all the details for you? But all of these have been developed and recommended by the faculty, the discipline faculty. It's the only way we can do it.
Vice President Long, I'm the one asking you the question of what is in here? I need to know what I'm approving. If it's not, I don't think it's adequate for us to approve. I don't know what I'm approving here because I don't have all the details. And as you know, I'm not a rubber stamp board member, I'm not questioning the process. I'm confident that you guys followed a very robust process. I just want to know what I'm approving here because I can't tell. And it doesn't sound like anybody can explain to me what's happening with these...
Trustee Zia, you...
I'm still talking with these inactive courses that you guys are recommending. I just want to know, if you're saying you're replacing it with other courses, then which is it? Which courses are you replacing it with? Is it earlier courses, modified courses, where can I find that?
Trustee Zia, basically, what you're doing with this is inactivating ADN 322A, and the explanation is bringing in some of these other courses. And I'm trying to understand what you're asking, but these other courses satisfy what 322A was doing, so it's no longer needed. I'm happy to put you in contact with department faculty if there's further question. But I'm not quite sure how much more detail to go into on this than what's here. Because I'm really trying to understand, I'm really trying to understand the question.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Karen. I was trying to explain to you, when you say you're inactivating a course, ADN 322A, and then the explanation talks about two other courses, but doesn't say it's in replacement of that inactivated course. I'm just trying to understand, is that your intent? That you're replacing the inactivated course with those two other courses that are listed?
I believe that is what they are trying to say there, that if you read the last, eliminating the need for this course for 30-unit option certificate because they have the other courses.
Okay, well, one can't naturally infer that, that's why I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.